Fellow Americans, good morning. Certain dates echo throughout history, including dates that instantly remind all who have lived through them, where they were and what they were doing when our democracy came under assault. Dates that occupy not only a place on our calendars, but a place in our collective memory. December 7th, 1941.
Here is the actual bombing of the mighty USS Arizona by Jap planes. Here was displayed heroism that will live forever in the glorious annals and traditions of the American Navy. Here is a tragic unforgettable page in the annals of America. Here, the cunning deceit of the Japs will never be forgotten. The Arizona's gun crews battered and broken fired to the last. The Jap sneak blow caused hundreds of military and civilian lives. The treacherous attack cost our Pacific Fleet two battleships outright, another capsized, the loss of three destroyers and a mine layer.
September 11th, 2001.
This is as close as we can get to the base of the World Trade Center. You can see the firemen assembled here, the police officers, FBI agents, and you can see the two towers. A huge explosion now raining debris on all of us. We better get out of the way!
And January 6th, 2021.
Fucking hey, man. Glad to see you guys. You guys are fucking patriots. Look at this guy. He's got covered in blood. God bless you.
Get you guys to leave the Senate wing?
We will. I've been making sure they ain't disrespecting the place.
Okay, just want to let you guys know, this is like the sacredest place.
But one of these things just doesn't belong here. Now one of these things... Oh, just I did the wrong part. One of these things just doesn't belong here.
We came close to half of the House nearly dying.
My team and I decided at that point, we keep the death threats away. We tried to report them documented.
If this was the journey that my life was taking, that I felt that things were going to be okay.
Hello, everyone. My name is Swamp. And oh, it's a big day. It's a big day in American history. I'm sure we're gonna find out so many great things that we had just no idea about. And it looks like they're already getting started. They're actually kind of on time, which is surprising. I'm pretty sure all we're gonna find out from this is that everything is pretty much exactly what we thought it was, and they're just still full of shit. That's my, that's my big prediction. Maybe we'll see a few Capitol Police officers cry, you know? Maybe see some more lies. The usual, the usual. That seems to be the only thing they know how to do.
The Select Committee to Investigate the January 6th Attack on the United States Capitol will be in order. Without objection, the Chair is authorized to declare the committee in recess at any point. Pursuant to House Deposition Authority Regulation 10, the Chair announces the committee's approval to release the deposition material presented during tonight's hearing.
Man, this is gonna be big stuff, guys.
Thanks to everyone watching tonight for sharing part of your evening to learn the facts and causes of the events leading up to and including the violent attack on January 6th, 2021. Our democracy, electoral system, and-
Boy, that's what I love, right? Is they say that an AR-15 is a weapon of war and regular people shouldn't have it. But then at the same time, an unarmed group of people almost overtook our government, apparently according to them. I mean, how can that be? I mean, because an AR-15 is, you know, it's not even enough. You don't even need it because, as Biden said, you don't need one of those because the government had, we got nukes. Yet we almost had our democracy ended by unarmed protesters.
...on January 6th, 2021. Over the next few weeks, hopefully you will get to know the other members, my colleagues up here and me. We represent a diversity of communities from all over the United States.
Thank God for that.
Rural areas and cities, East Coast, West Coast, and the heartland.
Can you imagine if it wasn't diverse?
All of us have one thing in common: We swore the same oath. That same oath that all members of Congress take upon taking office and afterwards every two years if they are reelected. We swore an oath to defend the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic. The words of the current oath taken by all of us- ...that nearly every United States government employee takes have their roots in the Civil War. Throughout our history, the United States has fought against foreign enemies to preserve our democracy, electoral system-
And I'm pretty sure C-SPAN is broadcasting it as well.
...when the United States Capitol was stormed and burned in 1814-
Maybe they have a soundtrack on it. This is directly from the January 6th Committee's YouTube channel.
Afterwards, in 1862, when American citizens had taken up arms against this country- ...Congress adopted a new oath-
You think there'd be more than that?
...to help make sure no person-
Most of it is people like us trolling them. I mean, come on.
...who supported the rebellion could hold a position of public trust. Therefore, congresspersons and United States federal government employees were required for the first time to swear an oath to defend the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Dun, dun, dun.
That oath was put to test on January 6th, 2021. The police officers who held the line that day honored their oath. Many came out of that day blooded and broken. They still bear those wounds, visible and invisible. They did their duty. They repelled the mob and ended the occupation of the Capitol.
It's not exactly how I remember it. I gotta, I gotta be honest with you.
So that Congress could return-
Dude. It's not exactly how I remember it.
...count your votes to ensure the transfer of power-
Let me see if I still have that video. I think I do somewhere.
But unlike in 1814, it was domestic enemies of the Constitution who stormed the Capitol and occupied the Capitol, who sought to thwart the will of the people to stop the transfer of power. And so they did.
Yeah, why do they always fail to bring up the fact that like they polled people away from the Capitol before this happened? It's like, and Trump was saying, "Why are you polling people off of the Capitol? There's gonna be a lot of people here." But apparently, that just never gets brought up. I don't know why that's not in, it seems relevant. And then, yeah, I'm trying to find, I have that video still somewhere of the Capitol Police just standing off to the side doing nothing and that guy screaming at them, being like, "Why aren't you stopping this? What are you doing?"
General George McClellan would wave the white flag when it came to preserving the Union. But even with that grim fate hanging in the balance, President Lincoln was ready to accept the will of the voters come with me. He made a quiet pledge. He wrote down the words. "This morning, as for some days past, it seems exceedingly probable that this administration will not be reelected. Then it will be my duty to so cooperate with the president-elect."
Why is this even being brought up? I don't understand. What is this?
It will be my duty-
Oh, yeah, I actually do have that video of Antifa changing into-
He asked them to make the same commitment he did-
Because that's the video from inside the Capitol of the first people who got in. Was these like people totally clad in black and everything? And there's video footage of them changing clothes.
...do whatever the president who came before him did and what every president who followed him would do. Until Donald Trump.
Yeah, yeah, because that's totally what happened. Trump even said multiple times, "Oh, no, I'll accept the, I'll accept the results for sure." Here, look at this, look at this.
Don't believe me? Hear what his former Attorney General had to say about it.
This is, uh, people, they're, they're changing clothes right outside the Capitol on January 6th. They're, they're changing into Trump gear.
No, just what I, I've been, I've had, I had three discussions with the President that I can recall. One was on November 23rd.
Yeah, he did. That, that, I can't remember that guy's name. I do remember that.
And I've been through sort of the give and take of those discussions. And in that context, I made it clear I did not agree with the idea of saying the election was stolen and putting out this stuff, which I told the President was bullshit. And, uh, you know, I didn't want to be a part of it. And that's one of the reasons that went into me deciding to leave when I did. I observed, I think it was on December 1st, that, you know, how can we, you can't live in a world where, where the incumbent administration stays in power based on its view-
That never happened. Even when Trump was saying that he felt that the election was stolen from him, he still said that he was gonna let it happen. Like, I mean, he wasn't gonna do anything to stop it. But, you know, facts don't matter. We know that.
Top law enforcement official in the country, telling the President exactly what he thought about claims of a stolen election. Donald Trump had his days in court to challenge the results. He was within his rights to seek those judgment. In the United States, law-abiding citizens have those tools for pursuing justice.
And I, and I did find, right here- Because apparently-
And in this country, that's the end of the-
They fought to, uh, stop this from happening or whatever the hell they claim. Watch, watch, from, uh, from an old Swamp video, man. Yeah, it looks like, looks like they were really doing a lot. They did just enough, you know?
And ultimately, Donald Trump, the President of the United States, spurred a mob of domestic enemies of the Constitution to march down the Capitol and subvert American democracy.
God, the balls on these people to say this stuff is just remarkable.
...obstruction of an official proceeding, conspiracy to defraud the United States.
He said peacefully, "Make your voices heard." He even started telling people to stop, stop, what are you, stop, don't do this, like- Oh, an attempted coup. Go fuck yourself.
...shortly after January 6th to overthrow the government. The violence was no accident. It represents-
Again, I ask, i-if Biden says that we couldn't even overthrow the government with AR-15s, but they're a weapon of war, but they're not, but, but we don't need them because they have better stuff, then how did we almost lose our entire democracy? Because people who were unarmed went into the building, were let into the building? Come on, what are you talking about? None of those things add up to anything.
But after first agreeing to the idea, Donald Trump's allies in Congress put a stop to it. Apparently, they don't want January 6th investigated at all. And in the last 17 months, many of those same people have tried to whitewash what happened on January 6th.
Like what?
To rewrite history, call it a tourist visit, label it legitimate political discourse.
Well, no one ever said that. No one said it was legitimate political discourse. That's just a blatant lie.
Do you believe me or your lying eyes? We can't sweep what happened under the rug. The American people deserve answers.
And we don't want to, but the problem is, is you're trying to make it something more than it is. It really wasn't that big of a deal. I mean, the people who committed crimes should be charged and the people who didn't should be let go. Yet we still have people in prison right now without due process. Yeah, fantastic.
...protects all of us, we the people. And this scheme was an attempt to undermine the will of the people. So tonight and over the next few weeks, we're going to remind you-
I can tell you right now, no one's gonna be watching any more than just this first one. I'm not.
...must do much more than just look backwards. Because our democracy remains in danger, the conspiracy to thwart the will of the people is not over. There are those in this audience who thirst for power but have no love or respect for what makes America great: devotion to the Constitution, allegiance to the rule of law, our shared journey-
Yeah, I know. Which, which group of people has more reverence for the Constitution, I wonder? The people who believe that America is the greatest country on Earth or the people who believe America is systemically racist?
The world is watching what we do here. America has long been expected to be a shining city on the hill, a beacon of hope and freedom, a model for others when we are at our best. How can we play that role when our House is in such disorder? We must confront the truth with candor, resolve, and determination.
There's so much stuff, especially through 2019, with people actually inciting violence, but no one ever said shit about that. That was totally fine. Oh, no, we could have tons of Democrats actually advocating for burning down businesses and attacking political opposition in the street. Explicitly calling for it, but that's totally fine. That, but, but Trump saying, "Hey, peacefully let your voices be heard. Let's march to the Capitol and peacefully let your voices be heard." Insurrection!
It's been a particular privilege to count as a partner in this effort and to count as a friend, the June woman from Wyoming, Ms. Cheney. She is a patriot, a public servant, a profound courage-
I'm not sure that any of these people know what a patriot is. I'm just saying. I'm not, I'm not taking their word on that one.
It's my pleasure to recognize Ms. Cheney for her opening statement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yeah, this ought to be good.
And let me echo those words about the importance of bipartisanship and what a tremendous honor it is to work on this committee.
Whenever these clowns talk about bipartisanship, all they mean is shut up and do what I say. As long as you agree with me, then we're both on the same page. Oh, yeah, that's exactly what happened.
But he did not condemn the attack. Instead, he justified it. "These are the things and events that happen," he said, "when a sacred landslide election victory is so unceremoniously and viciously stripped away from great patriots who've been badly and unfairly treated for so long. As you will see in the hearings to come, President Trump believed his supporters at the Capitol, and I quote, "were doing what they should be doing." This is what he told his staff as they pleaded with him to call off the mob-
Dude, this is such a mischaracterization, it's ridiculous. I mean, what the hell?
Over a series of hearings in the coming weeks, you will hear testimony, live and on video, from more than half a dozen former White House staff in the Trump administration, all of whom were in the West Wing of the White House on January 6th. You will hear testimony that, quote-
I've said it before, but I was there on January 6th and almost everything that I saw on the news when I got back to my hotel was utter bullshit. I mean, I was already able to see it right off the bat. And no, no, unfortunately, I wasn't cool enough to make it into the Capitol. No, I'm just kidding. I got the hell out of there once they started- Shooting gas and whatnot. I was like, "Yeah, I think it's time to leave, guys." Not that I was anywhere even near it. I was down by the reflecting pool most of the time, but- And that was a crazy day for sure, but god, the lies, immediately the lies. As soon as I got back to the hotel, we turned on the TV and everything that they said was a lie. CNN and MSNBC and others were reporting that there was people carrying Nazi flags, swastikas into the Capitol. They said there was like six or seven of these people. Like, six or seven flags. And it's like, well, then show me one picture. Show me one picture. That's all I want to see and then I'll believe you. Oh, yeah, they always gloss over whenever Trump says anything like peacefully or nonviolently or whatever. They all do that. Or when he was saying like, doing what they should be doing. Okay, he was saying that when there was people showing up with signs, not when they were trying to break into the Capitol.
...including directly from those who participated in this attack. You will see video of them explaining what caused them to do it. You will see their posts on social media. We will show you what they have said in federal court. On this point, there is no room for debate. Those who invaded our Capitol and battled law enforcement for hours were motivated by what President Trump had told them, that the election was stolen and that he was the rightful president. President Trump summoned the mob, assembled the mob, and lit the flame of this attack. You will also hear about plots to commit seditious conspiracies on January 6th. A crime defined in our laws as conspiring to overthrow, put down, or destroy by force the government of the United States or to oppose by force the authority thereof. Multiple members of two groups, the Oath Keepers and the Proud Boys, have been charged with this crime for their involvement in the events leading up to and on January 6th.
Oh, we know about the Proud Boys, that crazy white nationalist group with their leader Enrique.
The attack on our Capitol was not a spontaneous riot. Intelligence available before January 6th identified plans to, quote, invade the Capitol, occupy the Capitol, and take other steps to halt Congress's count of electoral votes that day. In our hearings to come, we will identify elements of those plans-
I support all legitimate investigations into any, anybody who committed crimes on January 6th. And I'll even support your ridiculous committee here. If you do equal investigating and pull, well, committee together for all of the billions and billions of dollars in damages and lives lost from the left rioting for two years straight. How about that? Is that fair? Can we say that? I'll let you have your January 6th investigation because if someone broke the law, we should capture them, man. We should. But we should investigate these people as well. People who actually we know committed crimes and burned down businesses and killed police officers and civilians? I mean, the only person who died on January 6th was Ashley Babbitt, who was a civilian. Veteran, I mean, come on.
In our hearings, you will see evidence of each element of this plan. In our second hearing, you will see that Donald Trump and his advisors knew that he had in fact lost the election.
Oh, yeah, fish, I mean, and it wasn't even just that he went there to murder him. He had a, a torture kit. I mean, he was gonna bind him and torture him and kill anyone who got in his way and then he-
Jason Miller was a senior Trump campaign spokesman-
I'm sorry, what did she just say?
In this clip, Miller describes a call between the Trump campaign's internal data expert-
Sorry, I got sidetracked. What'd she say?
I was in the Oval Office, um, and-
Everything that you're about to say has been discredited because you're wearing a mask. Stop wearing a mask.
And that was based, Mr. Miller, on Matt and the data teams' assessment of this sort of county by county, state by state results as reported?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, man. Do the investigation into crimes that we actually know. Put a committee together, get the Justice Department involved for all the left-wing violence. The Democrats, the literally billions of dollars in damages, the people who were killed. Can we investigate that? I'll let you have your January 6th committee. Anyone who committed a crime should be arrested. But it needs to go both ways. Justice can't only flow in one direction. Then it's not justice. It's an opinion.
I remember a call with, uh, Mr. Meadows, where Mr. Meadows was asking me what I was finding and if I was finding anything. And I remember sharing with him that we weren't finding anything that would be sufficient to, um, change the results in any of the key states.
When was that conversation?
Probably in November, mid to late November. I think it was before my child was born.
And what was Mr. Meadows' reaction to that information?
I believe the words he used were, "So there's no there there?"
There's no there there. The Trump campaign's general counsel, Matt Morgan, gave similar testimony. He explained that all of the fraud allegations-
Man, I can't, you know, I can't say too much about, uh, that election because, you know, don't want to get thrown off YouTube, but this is- To say that there's just no evidence and blah, 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 you are just out of your fucking mind. No way. Someone said that his election claims were wrong? Dude, that never happens. This must be groundbreaking information.
...told the President in no uncertain terms that, uh, I did not see evidence of fraud.
Well, then you're a liar or a moron. I mean, I don't know what else to say.
And frankly, a year and a half later, I haven't seen anything to, to change my mind on that.
Attorney General Barr also told President Trump that his allegations about Dominion voting machines were groundless.
I saw absolutely zero basis for the allegations, but they were made in such a sensational way that they obviously were influencing a lot of people-
As opposed to this trial, that's not sensational at all, or this hearing.
...that there was this systemic corruption in the system and that their votes didn't count and that these machines controlled by somebody else were actually determining it, which was complete nonsense.
They admit that that's not nonsense. The Democrats said it before 2020 and now they're saying it again in, in, uh, these elections that are happening, midterm elections. It, it just depends on what you're talking about. It depends on the context, apparently. When you're talking about things that the Democrats want, well, there, there is, there's no problem. Nothing's wrong with it. Nothing's wrong with it. When it's things the Democrats don't want, suddenly the New York Times is writing articles about how Dominion voting machines are faulty, and they don't work and they're easily hackable, but whatever. The gaslighting, they know they're not going to be held accountable, so they can just say whatever they want, and then they'll cite it. Other people will cite it as evidence. Brilliant.
Many of President Trump's White House staff also recognized that the evidence did not support the claims President Trump was making. This is the President's daughter commenting on Bill Barr's statement that the department found no fraud sufficient to overturn the election.
None of this is evidence. What is the point of this? They just can't get past Trump, can they? This is just an indictment of Trump again. They, they just wanted that third impeachment, man.
Did you reflect your perspective about the election when Attorney General Barr made that statement?
It affected my perspective. I respect Attorney General Barr. So I accepted what he said, was saying.
As you will hear on Monday, the President had every right to litigate his campaign claims.
Wait, was that supposed to be her?
But he ultimately lost more than 60 cases in state and federal courts.
Wait, she just said, "I, I accepted what he was saying"? That's supposed to be her admitting that there was no voter fraud?
President's claims in the election cases were so frivolous and unsupported that the President's lead lawyer, Rudy Giuliani, not only lost the lawsuits, his license to practice law was suspended. Here's what the court said of Mr. Giuliani. Giuliani communicated demonstrably false and misleading statements to courts, lawmakers, and the public at large, in his capacity as lawyer for former President Donald J. Trump and the Trump campaign in connection with Trump's failed effort at reelection in 2020. As you will see in great detail in our hearings, President Trump ignored the rulings of our nation's courts.
You know, if this is gonna be all fiction, like it seems to be so far, they should have got like Hans Zimmer or, you know, someone to come in and do a soundtrack for it at least, you know? Get us a little bit more, uh...
...and the Department of Homeland Security.
Give us, give us a little bit, a little bit of something entertaining. I mean, jeez.
President Trump invested millions of dollars in campaign funds purposely spreading false information, running ads he knew were false, and convincing millions of Americans that the election was corrupt and that he was the true president. As you will see, this misinformation campaign provoked the violence on January 6th. In our third hearing, you will see that President Trump corruptly planned to replace the Attorney General of the United States.
Here, I'll, I'll, I'll put some on here for it. Let's see.
So the U.S. Justice Department would spread his false stolen election claims. In the days before January 6th, President Trump told his top Justice Department officials, quote, "Just say the election was corrupt and leave the rest to me and the Republican Congressman." Senior Justice Department officials, men he had appointed, told him they could not do that because it was not true. So President Trump decided to replace them.
Tell me that doesn't make it more enjoyable.
He offered Jeff Clark, an environmental lawyer at the Justice Department, the job of acting Attorney General. President Trump wanted Mr. Clark to take a number of steps, including sending this letter to Georgia and five other states, saying the U.S. Department of Justice had, quote, "identified significant concerns that may have impacted the outcome of the election." This letter is a lie. The Department of Justice had in fact repeatedly told President Trump exactly the opposite. They had investigated his stolen election allegations and found no credible fraud that could impact the outcome of the election.
I'm sorry, I don't know if anyone else finds this as funny as I do, but man.
This letter and others like it would have urged multiple states to withdraw their official and lawful electoral votes for Biden.
This is what it sounds like they want, you know?
Acting Deputy Attorney General Richard Donahue described Jeff Clark's letter this way, quote, "This would be a grave step for the department to take and could have tremendous constitutional, political, and social ramifications for this country."
This is what it's like.
The committee agrees with Mr. Donahue's assessment. If Clark assumed the role of Attorney General in the days before January 6th and issued these letters, ramifications could indeed have been greater.
This is like the ads that they made about death Santas.
Mr. Donahue also said this about Clark's plan.
And I recall toward the end saying, "What your proposal is nothing less than the United States Justice Department meddling in the outcome of the presidential election."
In our hearings, you will hear firsthand how the senior leadership of the Department of Justice threatened to resign, how the White House counsel threatened to resign, and how they confronted Donald Trump and Jeff Clark in the Oval Office. The men involved, including Acting Attorney General Jeff Rosen and Acting Deputy Attorney General Richard Donahue, were appointed by President Trump. These men honored their oaths of office, they did their duty, and you will hear from them in our hearings. By contrast, Jeff Clark has invoked his Fifth Amendment privilege against self-incrimination and refused to testify.
Yeah, I'm telling you, it's, it's a Democrat campaign ad, for sure.
Representative Scott Perry, who was also involved in trying to get Clark appointed as Attorney General, has refused to testify here. As you will see, Representative Perry contacted the White House in the weeks after January 6th.
Let's change up the feeling a little bit, let's see how this one goes with it.
...seek a presidential pardon. Multiple other Republican congressmen also sought presidential pardons for their roles in attempting to overturn the 2020 election.
Because this is an investigation after all, let's see if they can get some film noir type stuff going.
In our fourth hearing, we will focus on President Trump's efforts to pressure Vice President Mike Pence to refuse to count electoral votes on January 6th. Vice President Pence has spoken publicly about this.
Hey, no, it's, it's not quite right. I gotta, I gotta get the epic dramatic.
President Trump is wrong. I had no right to overturn the election. The presidency belongs to the American people and the American people alone. And frankly, there is no idea more on America than the notion that any one person could choose the American president.
What President Trump demanded that Mike Pence do wasn't just wrong, it was illegal and it was unconstitutional.
Dude, this is literally all these Democrat, uh, campaign ads.
Witnesses in these hearings will explain how the former Vice President and his staff approached President Trump over and over again, that what he was pressuring Mike Pence to do was illegal.
They really should hire me, man.
As you will hear, President Trump engaged in a relentless effort to pressure Pence, both in private and in public.
Yeah.
You will see the evidence of that pressure from multiple witnesses, live and on video.
Oh, yeah, Fox, high five. You know they think they're knocking it out of the park.
Vice President Pence demonstrated his loyalty to Donald Trump consistently over four years, but he knew that he had a higher duty to the United States Constitution. This is testimony from the Vice President's chief of staff.
Dude, if you just like cut in some random scenes of, uh, like drone footage from over New York, you know? Like, this is perfectly the, uh, a Democrat campaign ad.
I think he was proud to have stood beside the President for all that he'd done, but I think he ultimately knew that his fidelity to the Constitution was his first and foremost.
Show some slow motion shots of January 6th.
And, um, and that's, that's what he articulated publicly, and I think that's what he felt.
His fidelity to the Constitution was more important than his fidelity to President Trump and his desire.
The oath he took, yep.
Yes.
You'll also hear about a lawyer named John Eastman. Mr. Eastman was deeply involved in President Trump's plans. You'll hear from former Fourth Circuit Federal Judge Michael Luthig, a highly respected, leading conservative judge.
Oh, you ready?
John Eastman clerked for Judge Luthig. Judge Luthig provided counsel to the Vice President's team in the days before January 6th.
And as this is going, you just go and pop over to throw this on every now and then?
Judge will explain how Eastman wrote the law at every turn. And you will see email exchanges between Eastman and the Vice President's counsel as the violent attack on Congress was underway.
And then it pops back.
Mr. Jacob said this to Mr. Eastman. "Thanks to your bullshit, we are under siege." You will also see evidence that John Eastman did not actually believe the legal position he was taking. In fact, a month before the 2020 election, Eastman took exactly the opposite view on the same legal issues. In the course of the select committee's work to obtain information from Mr. Eastman...
And then, and then while they're talking about Donald Trump, you throw up this.
...we've had occasion to present evidence to a federal judge. The judge evaluated the facts and he reached the conclusion that President Trump's efforts to pressure Vice President Pence to act illegally by refusing to count electoral votes likely violated two federal criminal statutes. And the judge also said this.
Dude, I'm, I'm gonna get a job after this stream, I think.
If Dr. Eastman and President Trump's plan had worked, it would have permanently ended the peaceful transition of power undermining American democracy and the Constitution. If the country does not commit to investigating and pursuing accountability for those responsible, the court fears January 6th will repeat itself. Every American should read what this federal judge has written. The same judge, Judge Carter, issued another decision on Tuesday night, just this week, indicating that John Eastman and other Trump lawyers knew that their legal arguments had no real chance of success in court, but they relied on those arguments anyway to try to, quote, "overturn a democratic election."
There you go, right here you go.
And you will hear that while Congress was under attack on January 6th and the hours following the violence, the Trump legal team in the Willard Hotel War Room continued to work to halt the count of electoral votes. In our fifth hearing, you will see evidence that President Trump corruptly pressured state legislators and election officials to change election results.
Dude, I'm getting emotional. This is working on me. The, the, uh, emotional manipulation is working.
You will hear additional details about President Trump's call to Georgia officials, urging them to, quote, "find 11,780 votes."
It doesn't matter. It's the UK, but whatever.
Votes that did not exist, and his efforts to get states to rescind certified electoral slates without factual basis and contrary to law. You will hear new details about the Trump campaign and other Trump associates' efforts to instruct Republican officials in multiple states to create intentionally false electoral slates and transmit those slates to Congress.
And then you just gotta throw these up on there, but if only I had some kind of, uh, throw a filter on it, make it black and white, so it's scarier.
falsely certify that Trump won states he actually lost. In our final two June hearings, you will hear how President Trump summoned a violent mob and directed them illegally to march on the United States Capitol.
Man, I'm doing their job for them.
While the violence was underway, President Trump failed to take immediate action, stop violence, and instruct his supporters to leave the Capitol. As we present these initial findings, keep two points in mind. First, our investigation is still ongoing, so what we make public here will not be the complete set of information we will ultimately disclose. And second, the Department of Justice is currently working with cooperating witnesses and has disclosed to date only some of the information it has identified from encrypted communications and other sources. On December 18th, 2020...
See, now, here you go.
A group, including General Michael Flynn, Sidney Powell, Rudy Giuliani, and others, visited the White House. They stayed late into the evening.
Out of sync a little bit.
We know that the group discussed a number of dramatic steps, including having the military seize voting machines and potentially rerun elections. You will also hear that President Trump met with that group alone for a period of time before White House lawyers and other staff discovered the group was there and rushed to interview.
This is the quality you get coming to the swamp stream. You know how bored you'd be if you were watching this actually on the...
A little more than an hour after Ms. Powell, Mr. Giuliani, General Flynn, and the others finally left the White House, President Trump sent the tweet on the screen now telling people to come to Washington on January 6th.
Oh, no. God, that music change was perfect.
"Be there," he instructed them. "We'll be wild." As you will see, this was a pivotal moment. This tweet initiated a chain of events. The tweet led to the planning for what occurred on January 6th, including by the Proud Boys, who ultimately led the invasion of the Capitol and the violence on that day. The indictment of a group of Proud Boys alleges that they planned, quote, "to oppose by force the authority of the government of the United States."
It, it's just too easy, because then you just switch over, hang on.
And according to the Department of Justice, on January 6th, 2021, the defendants directed, mobilized, and led members of the crowd onto the Capitol grounds and into the Capitol, leading to the dismantling of metal barricades, the destruction of property, the breaching of the Capitol building, and the assaults on law enforcement. Although certain former Trump officials have argued that they did not anticipate violence on January 6th, the evidence suggests otherwise.
The evidence suggests it, man. Oh, here we go.
The White House was receiving specific reports in the days leading up to January 6th, including during President Trump's ellipse rally, indicating that elements in the crowd were preparing for violence at the Capitol. And on the evening of January 5th, the President's close adviser, Steve Bannon, said this on his podcast.
Oh, no. What did he say?
All hell is going to break loose tomorrow. Just understand this, all hell is going to break loose tomorrow.
Oh, no.
As part of our investigation, we will present information about what the White House and other intelligence agencies knew, and why the Capitol was not better prepared. But we will not lose sight of the fact that the Capitol Police did not cause the crowd to attack, and we will not blame the violence that day, violence provoked by Donald Trump on the officers who bravely defended all of us.
Yeah, who knew this music that I just found on YouTube, royalty-free music, would sing so well?
In our final hearing, you will hear a moment-by-moment account of the hours-long attack from more than half a dozen White House staff, both live in the hearing room and via videotaped testimony. There's no doubt that President Trump was well aware of the violence as it developed. White House staff urged President Trump to intervene and call off the mob.
And you know, if they're bringing this up...
Here's a document written while the attack was underway by a member of the White House staff advising what the President needed to say, quote, "Anyone who entered the Capitol without proper authority should leave immediately." This is exactly what his supporters on Capitol Hill and nationwide were urging the President to do. He would not. You will hear that leaders on Capitol Hill begged the President for help, including Republican Leader McCarthy, who was, quote, "scared," and called multiple members of President Trump's family after he could not persuade the President himself. Not only did President Trump refuse to tell the mob to leave the Capitol, he placed no call to any element of the United States government to instruct that the Capitol be defended.
Oh, that's what I said, uh, earlier, was that, yeah, they never bring this up, that Trump was the one who was like, "Why are you guys pulling security from the Capitol before this rally?" He was like, "There's gonna be like tens of thousands of people, we should have security." And the mayor in DC and the authorities were like, "No, we're gonna pull all of our people except for like 12."
The Vice President Pence...
Yeah, that was a good idea, but they never bring that up.
For example, here is what General Milley, the chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, testified to this committee.
There were two or three calls with Vice President Pence. He was very animated, and he issued very explicit, uh, very direct, unambiguous orders. There was no question about that, and he was, and, and, and I can get to the exact quotes, I guess, from some of our records somewhere, but he was very, very, very firm.
Well, Milley, Milley's certainly never had any kind of agenda. Milley's been nothing but a perfectly great...
Get the military down, get the guard down, put down this situation, et cetera.
By contrast, here is General Milley's description of his conversation with President Trump's chief of staff, Mark Meadows, on January 6th.
Milley definitely doesn't have an agenda.
We have, we have to kill the narrative that the Vice President was making all the decisions. We need to establish the narrative that, um, you know, that the President is still in charge and that things are steady or stable or what's that thing. I immediately interpreted that as politics, 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 red flags.
Telling you, man, they should have hired me for this.
But I remembered distinctly.
And you will hear from witnesses how the day played out inside the White House.
Yep, and here we go. We have footage of how the day played out in the White House.
President Trump would not ask his supporters to leave the Capitol. It was only after multiple hours of violence, President Trump finally released a video instructing the riotous mob to leave, and as he did so, he said to them, quote, "We love you."
Can you believe these people right here attacked, uh, the Capitol on January 6th?
You will also hear that in the immediate aftermath of January 6th, members of the President's family, White House staff, and others...
Oh, look at, there's Antifa bravely standing up to them.
Tried to step in to stabilize the situation.
See, there they are, trying to stabilize the situation.
...to land the plane before the presidential transition on January 20th. You will hear about members of the Trump cabinet discussing the possibility of invoking the 25th Amendment and replacing the President of the United States. Multiple members of President Trump's own cabinet resigned immediately after January 6th.
Man.
One member of the cabinet suggested that the remaining cabinet officers needed to take a more active role in running the White House and the administration.
Yeah, this is kind of a strange change of, for the music.
The most emblematic of those days is this exchange of texts between Sean Hannity and former President, uh, Trump's press secretary, Kayleigh McEnany.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip to the next track, let's see.
Sean Hannity wrote in part, "Key now, no more crazy people, no more stolen election talk. Yes, impeachment and 25th Amendment are real, many people will quit." Ms. McEnany responded in part, "Love that, that's the playbook." White House staff knew...
Wait, why was this bad? I'm, I guess I missed the setup. I've, I've been too busy goofing on them with music and images of the evil white supremacist rallies.
They knew that President Donald Trump... They knew that President Donald Trump was too dangerous to be left alone.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
At least until he left office on January 20th. These are important facts for Congress and the American people to understand fully.
Yeah, how do they, I mean, come on.
When a president fails to take the steps necessary to preserve our union, or worse, causes a constitutional crisis.
How many of these people do you think really believe this, and how many of these people are liars? Because it's gotta be one or the other. I'm not even sure which one's worse, honestly.
Others egged the president on. Others who could have acted refused to do so. In this case, the White House Counsel was so concerned about potentially lawless activity that he threatened to resign multiple times. That is exceedingly rare and exceedingly serious. It requires immediate attention, especially when the entire team threatens to resign.
Oh, this already feels like a Democrat ad.
However, in the Trump White House, it was not exceedingly rare, and it was not treated seriously. This is a clip of Jared Kushner addressing multiple threats by White House Counsel Pat Cipollone and his team of lawyers to resign in the weeks before January 6th. Jared, uh, are you aware of, um, instances where, uh, Pat Cipollone threatened to resign?
I, I kind of, like I said, my interest at that time was on trying to get as many partners up.
Yeah, this is like totally nothing. If you're just talking about nothing.
Him and the team were always saying, "Oh, we're gonna resign. We're not gonna be here if this happens, if that happens." So I kind of took it up to just be whining.
It's almost like, and just stay with me here, you know, stay with me here. They have nothing, and they know it. So we're just gonna try to put a bunch of other random shit in here and hope that people don't really get it, and we can maybe make people upset and remember that the orange man is bad. That's all it is. I mean, everyone knows that. The orange man is bad. It's just, that's all we need.
In our country, we don't swear an oath to an individual or a political party. We take our oath to defend the United States Constitution. And that oath must mean something. Tonight, I say this to my Republican colleagues who are defending the indefensible. There will come a day when Donald Trump is gone, but your dishonor will remain.
Well, I saw, uh, Salty said that he was gonna take a drink every time someone cries like a little bitch, and I was afraid that once people start testifying, that he might end up dead. And if you're just now coming into the stream, I've added some dramatic music since they're trying to produce this and make it so dramatic. I put the music on for them. Tell me this doesn't make it better.
The place where our presidents lie in state, watched over by statues of Washington and Jefferson, Lincoln and Grant, Eisenhower, Ford, and Reagan. Against every wall that night encircling the room, there were SWAT teams. Men and women in tactical gear with long guns deployed inside our Capitol Building.
Now, that's a good point, though. I mean, it's, it's already, I mean, to act like this was such a crazy thing and unprecedented, it was just, is insane.
Including one painted in 1824 depicting George Washington resigning his commission.
Literally, almost all of the DC area around the Capitol was on fire for like several days because of protesters, and they broke through police lines. They broke in. I mean, it's not like this is the first time something like this has happened. It's stupid. I'm not saying it's not stupid, but this whole dog and pony show is just absurd.
The sacred obligation to defend this peaceful transfer of power has been honored by every American president, except one. As Americans, we all have a duty to ensure that what happened on January 6th never happens again. To set aside partisan battles, to stand together, to perpetuate and preserve our great republic. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Finally, damn, lady.
As we provide answers to the American people about January 6th, it's important that we remember exactly what took place.
This music makes it 10 times better, man.
Most of the footage we are about to play has never been seen.
Really? I highly doubt that. I highly doubt that. If it has actually never been seen, I'd be interested.
This isn't easy to watch. I want to warn everyone that this video includes violence in strong language.
Okay, I'm actually interested in this, let's see.
Without objection, I include in the record a video presentation of the violence of January 6th.
All right, stop the music. Let's, let's, let's see. Let's see if he's actually showing something new. Or let's see if I end up in the video.
Yeah, just for awareness, be advised, there's probably about 300, uh, Proud Boys. They're marching eastbound. And this, uh, 400 block of, um, kinda independents actually own the mall towards the United States Capitol.
I am not allowed to say what's going to happen today because everyone's just gonna have to watch for themselves. But it's gonna happen. Something's gonna happen.
Well, that's a lefty chant. Don't use that. That's one thing I don't understand, is that a lot of this started happening when Trump was still speaking, so how they hold Trump responsible, I don't understand, but...
I hope Mike is gonna do the right thing. I hope so. I hope so. Because if Mike Pence does the right thing, we win the election. All Vice President Pence has to do is send it back to the states to recertify. And we become president, and you are the happiest people. Mike Pence is gonna have to come through for us, and if he doesn't, that will be a sad day for our country. Because you'll never take back our country with weakness. You have to show strength, and you have to be strong.
Cruiser 50, it does look like we're gonna have an ad hoc march stepping off here. There's a crowd surge heading east.
Mike Pence, I hope you're gonna stand up for the good of our Constitution and for the good of our country.
I love how these are the worst statements they're showing from Trump. We were all disappointed. Like, I don't know why that's like a edgy thing to show. This was meant to happen, though, because like I said, they only had like 12 people there. Are you kidding me? Trump asked them to bring more people to guard the Capitol. And so, so far, I've not seen anything that we haven't already seen, so...
Madam Speaker, the Vice President and the United States Senate.
Cruiser 50, we're gonna give riot warnings. The city's out loud in here. We're gonna give riot warnings. Gonna try and get compliance, but this is now effectively a riot.
In 49 hours, declaring it a riot.
Cruiser 50, be advised, uh, Capitol Police warned, advised, they're trying to breach and get into the Capitol.
But look at this. This is what I understand, is there's almost nobody there actually guarding the Capitol. Are you kidding me? How could that be?
We're about five minutes out. We're trying to make our way through all this.
They said, "We're gonna play footage that has never been seen." BG on the scene? Are you kidding me? We've all seen this.
Cruiser 50, we have a breach of the Capitol. Breach of the Capitol.
Interesting, they didn't play the part where the guy opened the door from the inside, but, okay.
They're requesting additional resources on the east side as they have broken into that window and they're trying to kick it in.
Without objection, the chair declares the house in recess pursuant to clause 12B of Rule 1.
Mike Pence didn't have the courage to do what should have been done to protect our country and our government's version. Giving states a chance to certify a corrected set of facts.
Oh, someone's reading Trump's tweet.
Not the rules that are inaccurate ones, which they were asked to previously so defy. U.S. demands the truth.
I love how they love, they love to show that, the, the supposed noose, but they never show you the whole thing. That thing was like four and a half feet tall on a piece of plywood. I mean, come on. Who are you gonna hang from that? The Lollipop Guild? I'm pretty sure that's the only way, that's the only effective thing that would be used for. Breached. Dude, look at that. There's still only like 15 police officers. I mean, come on, dude. That is such bull.
We can't hold this. We're gonna get too many fucking people. Look at this fucking vantage point, man.
Yeah, no shit. Your mayor in DC, as well as the other, uh, people at the top of the Capitol Police Force, pulled everybody before the rally. You got, you can't be serious. I mean, come on, dude.
We need an area for the House members. They're all walking over now through the tunnels.
Eventually, they ended up having like 30 or 40 police officers there, and that's it. I mean, come on.
We need to halt the doors of the Capitol. I need police support.
What? That was kinda goofy, I'm not gonna lie. I am waiting for the extreme violence part that this guy was talking about. This looks like a pretty, uh, tame Black Lives Matter protest thus far. Look at that little dude. Everyone's just walking around so casually.
Cruiser 50, be advised that Capitol Police is gonna start moving their resources inside. They're gonna start the M4 officers first.
Damn, look at that guy's beard. Little beast. Oh, you even heard a guy screaming, "No violence."
Okay, H208 with four members. The doors barricade. There's people flooded the hallways outside. There's no way out.
They keep showing people and, you know, saying that, what groups they're with. They haven't really done anything yet, but...
Evacuated officers still remaining on the House floor, in the, on the third floor, to use the subway tunnels. It's time to evacuate, so we secured the members on the other side. Copy.
Oh, are they gonna show, are they gonna show Ashley Babbitt getting shot?
It's up to us people now, the American people. One more time, what are you ready to do? And whatever it takes, I'll lay my life down if it takes. Absolutely. That's why we showed up today.
I mean, I've always said that there was a lot of people who did a lot of stupid stuff on this day, and there was people who deserved to be arrested, who deserved to be charged. They also do deserve their day in court. I mean, not just being locked up in solitary confinement for 23 hours a day with no access to lawyers or anything, but, you know, whatever. The bottom line is, obviously, that this was a planned, not, not from the side of what they're saying. It was planned by the feds, man. They wanted to bait people into this. I've actually seen Guar like three times.
They were peaceful people. These were great people. The crowd was unbelievable, and I mentioned the word love. The love, the love in the air. I've never seen anything like it.
I love how they, they play that. God, what a ridiculous appeal to emotion. Like, this is just retarded. I mean, it's like, dude, come on, Mr. Thompson. Get out of here. They play the thing where Trump's saying that, oh, these people were peaceful. Yes, they were. I was there. I didn't attack anybody.
For a period of approximately 10 minutes.
And I'm still waiting for the part where he was saying, uh, what, that, uh, never-before-seen footage and, uh, particularly violent egregious footage. That was nothing, dude. What are you talking about? Come on, man. Let me pull up, because I've, I've still got it here somewhere. I think I still have it pulled up from that same, uh, that same old Swamp News video I did about, on the anniversary of January 6th. Yeah, let's, let's compare these. I mean, come on. Since they're taking a quick recess for 10 minutes, let's watch my, uh, video, the old Swamp News from about a year ago, I guess, or no, wait. When was that? It was, uh... No, 2022, so it was a few months ago, so... Let's see, let's see.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Swamp Johnson.
Man, look at that good-looking guy.
And this video will be demonetized and most likely age-restricted. Welcome to Swamp News. It is the one-year anniversary of January 6th, which we all know was the deadliest threat to democracy in our nation's history. But before we get into that, I would like to show you a video of how the Left so peacefully protested the inauguration of Donald Trump. Here is a video by an intrepid reporter known as Maze.
Yeah, this, this already is more violent. I mean, what the hell are you talking about, man? Look at that. Oh, yeah, that looks the same as January 6th, for sure. They're chanting about killing people. I mean, come on. Yeah, this looks exactly the same as January 6th.
Small fires had appeared all day. This upped the temperature, which of course was the point.
One demonstrator threw a flashbang grenade back at police. It exploded in an officer's face.
Plenty of tear gas. Six officers reportedly injured.
They will destroy your limo. You need to leave now.
Hey, K-47, put the cops in Piggy Heaven.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Does this seem worse than January 6th just already, or... Possibly, maybe?
Beautiful and peaceful. And why the Trump supporters on January 6th couldn't have simply acted like that is really beyond me, and beyond anybody who has seen anything from January 6th. Joe Biden, the alleged President of the United States, had this to say:
I did not seek this fight brought to this Capitol one year ago today. But I will not shrink from it either. I will stand in this breach.
Nah, shut up.
I will defend this nation, and I will allow no one to place a dagger at the throat of democracy. We will make sure the will of the people is heard, that the ballot prevails, not violence, that authority in this nation will always be peacefully transferred. I believe the power of the presidency and the purpose is to unite this nation, not divide it.
Isn't it kind of amazing, actually, that just in this short amount of time, this was January 6th, uh... Like, when he was talking about this was right after it happened. Twenty, uh, 2020. Listen to the way he talks now. He was much more coherent back then. What a decline in such a short amount of time.
To lift us up, not tear us apart. See, about us, about us.
My bad.
Not about me.
Very strong words from our soundstage president, whose greatest accomplishment thus far has been making the $5 hot-and-ready pizza no more. But to further explain how dangerous this day really was and how close we came to losing our democracy, here is AOC talking about what she went through, while the actual footage of what she went through plays alongside it. Warning: This is intense. This was the day democracy almost died.
Um, if this was the journey that my life was taking, that I felt that things were going to be okay. Um, and that, you know...
Look at the panic. People standing around, wearing masks.
We came close to half of the House nearly dying on Wednesday.
You have all of those thoughts, um, where, you know, at the end of your life...
Neelin, that's a good one. How have I not heard that one before?
And, um, that's what happened to a lot of us on Wednesday. Um, and I thought I, I did not think, I did not know if I was going to make it to the end of that day alive.
I know. It was just so brutal. Her being in the building across the street and all. Man, it was, it was intense. I was closer to the insanity than she was. I mean, what the hell? And... To continue to further drive the point home, how serious, how serious this was... Let's listen to, uh... The theme song from January 6th. At least my theme song for it. All you. Let's hit it.
This is a target. Who wear you by condoms? This is the Capitol, our seat of government. It protects the rights that folks fought and died for, and there is no hypocrisy. These are people who have been slaughtered, fighting so they will not get murdered. And here they're protesting reelections, so there is no hypocrisy. The time will come to heal divisions, but now we need to consider justice, 'cause this is protest and this is treason. So there can be no hypocrisy.
Give me liberty or give me death.
Can you believe these people? I mean, seriously, what the hell, man? Oh, the worst day in American history. Yeah, the people who were out killing people, burning down cities, totally legit. That was, that was called for even. That was justified. Man, January 6th, though... I mean, Kamala Harris said it. That was, that was 9/11 and Pearl Harbor combined. And then multiplied, because, man, what a, what a brutal, brutal thing. Did you see all those people pushing each other inside the Capitol? I mean, I've seen more aggressive lines for rides at Disney World. But whatever. No worries.
I want to thank our witnesses for being with us this evening.
Oh, I gotta put the music, gotta put the music back on.
Of that terrible day. I know that some of the witnesses from our first hearing are in the room with us.
Music back on. There we go.
Along with some of the family members, friends, and widows of the officers who lost their lives as a result of the attack. Thank you all for being here for us and the American people. Officer Carolyn Edwards has been with the United States Capitol Police since 2017. On January 6th, Officer Edwards was assigned to the First Responder Unit, which serves as the first line of defense.
Dude, this is what they wanted it to sound like. I don't understand. Like I said, why didn't they actually hire someone from Hollywood? They would have done it. Written a soundtrack for him?
Special subset of the Uniform Division train to respond to mass demonstration events.
Hey, later, brother. I mean, trust me, besides the laughs from us hanging out, you're not missing anything from the committee, that's for sure.
Intelligence analysis from Johns Hopkins University. Nick Quistad is an acclaimed filmmaker, who credits include documenting stories from war zones in Afghanistan, Syria, and Iraq. On January 6th, Mr. Quistad was working on a documentary about, quote, "Why Americans are so divided when Americans have so much in common."
I honestly didn't plan on putting the background music to it, but oh my God, I'm so happy I did. I feel like I can listen to a lot more of this now, because it's just, it's just satire at this point. It's so dramatic.
And the chaos that ensued. I will now swear in our witnesses. The witnesses will please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Let the record reflect the witnesses' answer in the affirmative. Without objection, the witness's statement will be included in the record. Pursuant to Section 5C8 of House Resolution 503, I recognize myself for questioning. As you saw just a few minutes ago, the Proud Boys instigated the first breach of the Capitol just before 1 o'clock PM, where rioters pushed over barricades near the Peace Circle at the foot of the Capitol. Our two witnesses tonight were both there at the time of that first breach. Officer Edwards was standing with other officers behind a line of bike racks that marked the perimeter of the Capitol grounds. She bravely tried to prevent an angry crowd from advancing on the Capitol.
I feel like it's what they would want.
She was overrun and knocked unconscious as the crowd advanced on the Capitol. Mr. Quistad was a few yards away from Officer Edwards, taking footage of the Proud Boys as part of his work on a documentary film. Most of his footage has never been shown publicly before we shared it this evening.
Oh, really? I've yet to see anything that I haven't already seen.
If you could tell us why you believe it's important for you to share your story this evening with the committee and the American public.
Oh yeah, David, I walked right past her. Me and my buddy, we were just like, wow. That poor woman.
Um, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really appreciate it, and thank you to the committee for having me here to testify. I was called a lot of names on January 6th, 2021, and the days thereafter. I was called Nancy Pelosi's dog, called incompetent, called a hero.
This is all this is gonna be. It's just gonna be the, uh... It was, they were so mean! Our democracy almost died!
I was an American.
Do you have anything to support that, or...? No! But can't you see how serial I am? I'm super serial right now.
I had been called names before, but never had my patriotism or duty been called into question.
Wow, well, welcome to the fucking club, lady. I mean, what the hell are you talking about? I think most of us here, who are gonna watch Swamp videos, how many times have you been called a Nazi, or a traitor, or just any, you know, any of that nonsense that they've been screaming at us for the last five years? A white supremacist Nazi nationalist, blah, 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 blah. Come on, get out of here, lady.
I am the proud granddaughter of a Marine that fought in the Battle of the Chosin Reservoir in the Korean War. I think of my Papa often in these days, how he was so young and thrown into a battle he never saw coming, and answered the call at a great personal cost. How he lived the rest of his days with bullets and shrapnel in his legs, but never once complained about his sacrifice.
Not like you're doing here now.
I would like to think that he would be proud of me. Proud of his granddaughter.
Well, like I just said, probably fucking not.
Even though she was wounded, like he did, many years ago. I am my grandfather's granddaughter, proud to put on a uniform and serve the country. They dared to question my honor. They dared to question my loyalty. And they dared to question my duty. I am a proud American, and I will gladly...
Dude, what is this? Seriously, what is the point of this? This is all just PR BS. I mean, what? Are we, that was all she had to say. Like, what the hell was that? Now, what does that prove? Does that make, does that bring charges against anybody? There was people that were rude to me. Oh, well, jeez. We better shut down the government. What is this nonsense?
Good evening, Chair and Madam Vice Chair. Thank you for the introduction. Um, as stated in the winter of 2020, I was working on a documentary. As part of that documentary, I filmed several rallies in Washington DC.
Your accent exempts you from having an opinion on this. Get the fuck out.
There will be a rally on the Mall on January 6th. So my three colleagues and I came down to document the rally. According to the permit of the event, there was going to be a rally at the Ellipse. We arrived at the Mall and observed a large contingent of Proud Boys marching towards the Capitol. We filmed them, uh, and almost immediately I was separated from my colleagues. I documented the crowd turn from protesters to rioters to insurrectionists. I was surprised at the size of the group.
I love how they really think that if they just say Proud Boys enough, that it's like, it's gonna scare people enough.
I saw it, I documented it, and I experienced it.
For anyone who didn't understand how violent it was, you should have just gone to a Black Lives Matter riot.
Thank you, Mrs. Quested. The Select Committee has conducted extensive investigative work to understand what led the Proud Boys and other rioters to the Capitol on January 6th. We've obtained substantial evidence showing that the President's December 19th tweet calling his followers to Washington DC on January 6th energized individuals from the Proud Boys and other extremist groups.
Well, first of all, if you have evidence of that, I hope that you'll eventually show it, because you have not thus far. But what is the evidence of it? No, I mean, I mean, seriously, are you just claiming that a politician asked for people to rally? Wow, that's unprecedented. We've never seen that happen before.
White supremacists and right, Proud Boys.
Stand back and stand by.
After he made this comment, Enrique Tarrio, then Chairman of the Proud Boys, sat on parlor, standing by, sir. During our investigation, we learned that this comment during the presidential debate actually led to an increase in membership of the Proud Boys.
Of course it did.
Would you say that Proud Boys members increased after the "stand back, stand by" comment?
Of course.
Exponentially. I'd say triple.
That's not proof of anything.
And did you ever sell any "stand back and stand by" merchandise?
Uh, one of the vendors on my page actually beat me to it, but I wish I would have, I wish I would have made a "stand back" statement.
I mean, what does that matter? Do you know how many pieces of merch were made about the Bernie Sanders and dumb shit he says? I mean, so what?
Many of the witnesses that we interviewed were inspired by the President's call and came to DC for January 6th. But the extremists, they took it a step further. They viewed this tweet as a call to arms. A day later, the Department of Justice describes how the Proud Boys created a chat called the Ministry of Self-Defense Leadership Chat. In this chat, the Proud Boys established a new structure in anticipation of coming back to DC on January 6th. The Department of Justice describes Mr. Tarrio coming into possession.
I love how they're just describing people putting together political rallies that they don't agree with. I mean, tell me how this sounds any different than any other political rally. Not Antifa violent people, but like actual rallies. Ooh, Alex Jones, what's he saying?
Yeah, if you don't, there'll be no more republic, but we're not gonna let that happen. It's not even an if. It's either President Trump is encouraged and bolstered, strengthened to do what he must do, or we wind up in a bloody fight. We all know that. The fight's coming.
The Oath Keepers began planning to block the people's transfer of power shortly after the November 3rd election. And according to the Department of Justice, Stuart Rhodes, the Oath Keeper's leader, said to his followers that "we were not gonna get through this without the Civil War." In response to the December 19th, 2020 tweet by President Trump, the Oath Keepers focused on January 6th in Washington DC. In response to the tweet, one member, the President of the Florida Chapter, put on social media, "The President called us to the Capitol. He wants us to make it wild." The goal was for the Oath Keepers to be called to duty so that they could keep the President in power, although President Trump had just lost.
See, they just, they keep saying this but aren't supplying any evidence, because everything that they've shown doesn't support this. It shows people going there. It shows people going for a political rally. It goes showing people to fight like hell. But I mean, that's what all politicians do and say. Oh, we've got some grainy footage of guns, even though there was none at the rally, but okay. Dude, this is just CNN. I mean, this is...
There's mutual respect there. I think we're, we're fighting the same fight, and I think that's what's important.
The committee learned that the Oath Keepers went into the Capitol through the east doors in two stacked formations.
Yeah, look how, look how dangerous they look too, just walking casually.
Looking for Speaker Pelosi, although they never found her. As the attack was unfolding, Mr. Tarrio took credit.
The attack?
In documents obtained by the Department of Justice, Mr. Tarrio said in an encrypted chat, "Make no mistake, and we did this."
What is this footage?
Later on that evening, Mr. Tarrio even posted a video which seemed to resemble him in front of the Capitol with a black cape.
Enrique, why would you do this?
And the title of the video was "Premonition." The evidence developed by the Select Committee and the Department of Justice highlights how each group participated on the attack on the Capitol on January 6th.
What do you mean, what happened to Alex Jones? He's still around? Still got a show? He still does the rounds on other shows? See, this is a big problem that we have in this country, is we don't seem to understand the meaning of words anymore. None of this is evidence. What you're describing is things that could at best be considered circumstantial evidence. But you're saying we're gonna provide evidence that this happened, and then you show someone saying, "Well, we wanna fight for, uh, what we believe in." See, that's the evidence. And you're like, "No, that is not evidence." Otherwise, you'd literally have to arrest every single politician who has ever done anything in a local or federal level. I mean, like, this isn't evidence. It's a... We now think that the word "evidence" means "our" in... We now think that the word evidence means our interpretation. Evidence doesn't mean your interpretation. You gotta be able to prove it. Prove it. And they don't seem to ever do that.
Individuals associated with two violent extremist groups have been charged with seditious conspiracy in connection with the January 6th attack. One is the Oath Keepers. They are a group of armed anti-government extremists. The other group is the Proud Boys. They promote white supremacy.
Don't make me come after you.
With people they view as their political enemies. Members of both groups have already pled guilty to crimes associated with the January 6th attack. Mr. Quested, as part of the documentary you've been filming, you gain access to the Proud Boys and their leader, Enrique Tarrio. Your crew filmed them in Washington DC.
You notice how they've started to not call the Proud Boys white nationalists or white supremacists anymore? They used to always be the thing. They said they were white nationalists, but I guess they've said Enrique too many times, and they go, okay, people aren't buying the white nationalist narrative anymore. It makes us look silly. To say a man named Enrique was in charge of a white nationalist group.
Enrique Tarrio from jail. Uh, he'd, uh, been arrested for carrying, um, some magazines, uh, some long, uh, some extra capacity magazines and, uh, for the, he took responsibility for the burning of the.
They really need to work on their audio levels because I can't hear a damn word this guy's saying.
Um, on December the 12th. Um, we, um, we were attempting to get an interview with Mr. Tarrio. Uh, we had no idea of any of the events that were going to subsequently happen. Um, uh, we drove him to pick up his bags from the property department of the police, which is just south of the Mall. Uh, we picked up his bags and went to get some other bags from the Phoenix Hotel where we, um, encountered Mr. Stuart Rhodes, uh, from the Oath Keepers. Um.
Yeah, how much you wanna bet that never once through this entire weeks that they're gonna be talking about this, that they ever bring up that Alex Jones was the one who was outside yelling at people not to go in, saying that they're baiting you. This is, you shouldn't do this. And there's video footage of him doing this on like a megaphone or standing on top of a car and stuff screaming at people, "Don't go in. Don't do it." That's what they want you to do. Don't do it. How much you wanna bet they don't bring that up?
We then continued to follow Mr. Tarrio. There was some discussion about where he was gonna go. He ended up going towards a hotel in Baltimore, and we conducted an interview with him in the hotel room. Um, and then we returned to DC for that night, uh, in a, um, and what was interesting that night actually was that was the first indication that DC was much more.
Dude, I'm telling you, man. Listen to my jams. Do, the Democratic Party should hire me. I could, I could make their campaign videos.
At a hotel that, you know, was not as satisfactory as we would hope.
Thank you. So.
What was that weird smirk he had on his name, on his face at the end?
Filmed the meeting between Mr. Tarrio and Oath Keepers leader Stuart Rhodes, right?
Indeed.
You couldn't hear what was said, but according to the Justice Department indictment of Mr. Tarrio, a participant referenced the Capitol. Now, on the morning of January 6th.
Do you know how many people reference the Capitol leading up to January 6th?
Take place near the White House. What time did you meet up with the Proud Boys and what was happening when they met?
What do you guys think the over/under is on them actually presenting any evidence? Like, what do you think? Like, in the next two weeks or however long this is gonna go, what is, what are the odds that they're actually gonna present evidence? Or is it all just gonna be emotional appeals to get people upset or freaked out or scared?
Confused to a certain extent why we were walking away from the President's speech because that's what, um, I felt we were there to cover.
So at 10:30 AM, uh, that's early in the day. That's even before President Trump had started speaking.
Royalty free music that I used once before in a, uh, in a video.
Were marching together to the Capitol.
Um, a couple of hundred, potentially, yeah. I'd say a couple of hundred Proud Boys were marching towards the Capitol at that point.
At the time, was the area heavily guarded?
No, that was, um, we remember, I remember we walked past the, we walked down the Mall, we walked to the right of the reflecting pool, and then north along the road that leads to the Peace Circle. And as we were walking past the Peace Circle, I framed the Proud Boys to the right of my shot with the Capitol behind, and we see one sole police officer, um, at the barriers, which subsequently breached. We then walk up and passed a, um, tactical unit preparing, and there's, you see that in the film where the man questions their duty and their honor, and you see maybe a dozen, um, uh, Capitol Police, um, putting on their riot gear.
So.
That's something that I actually saw when I, when I, when I was there is when they finally started sending, I saw all the buses full of riot police that they were sending to the Capitol. And it's like, huh, that's interesting. I mean, Trump said that they should have already been there in the first place, but you know. Yeah, it was your idea. You guys, you did good. You did good.
Was much darker than at this day than, than had been in these other, in these other, in these other days.
No, I didn't mean to turn it off. There we go.
A contingent of Proud Boys that I hadn't met before from Arizona who appeared to wear these orange hats. And had orange armbands.
So when the Proud Boys went back down the hill to the Peace Circle, did a larger crowd start together?
Well, no. First of all, we went round to the back and down the steps, and we took some photographs on the east side of the Capitol, uh, and then we went for lunch.
What actually is the purpose of this?
So, Mr. Quested, you're a journalist, so you're careful to stick to things that you have a word.
Is this just to get Trump? I mean, what is the point of this? Because none of this really has anything to do with anything, as far as I can tell legally.
That you and others have provided the committee. First, there was a large group of Proud Boys present at the Capitol. We know that from multiple sources. You now estimate that there were around 250, uh, to 300 individuals that you've testified. They weren't there for President Trump's speech. We know this because they left that area to march toward the Capitol before the speech began. They walked around the Capitol that morning. I'm concerned this allowed them to see what defenses were in place and where weaknesses might be. And they decided to launch their attack at the Peace Circle, which is the front door of the Capitol complex. It's the first security perimeter that those marching from the Ellipse would have to come to as they moved toward the Capitol. The Peace Circle walkaway was, walkway was always where the thousands of angry Trump supporters would arrive after President Trump sent them from the Ellipse. The Proud Boys timed their attack.
From the lips?
To the moments before the start of the joint session.
I'm not going after Trump's lips. What the hell?
Also where President Trump directed the angry mob, quote, "We fight like hell," end quote. He told them before sending them down.
How long is it gonna be before they bring up the, uh, he even once said that Nazis were fine people? It's just all the same lies over and over again. Fight like hell. Yeah, that was totally a call to violence. It's not like every politician ever has said that.
Culmination of a month's long effort spearheaded by President Trump. Mr. Quested, thank you for your eyewitness account of the lead up to the breach of the Peace Circle. This brings us to a point in time where you and Officer Edwards were in close proximity. At this point, I reserve the balance of my time pursuant to 5C, Section 8 of House Resolution 503.
But seriously, I think I'm missing what the point of this is supposed to be because is, is the evidence that they're presenting, quote unquote, evidence, pointing to something? Like, what is, what is the point of this? Are they gonna end this and go, "See? Donald Trump should be impeached." Oh, what's that? He's not president? Oh. Well. He's still a bad man. To quote Hugh Donnelly, "He's a bad guy."
I wanna start Officer Edwards with a short clip that, um, shows.
Oh, here we go. This'll be good.
Horrible moment when you were injured as the Peace Circle was.
What's that little, she's got a little soldier on her desk. You see that? What is that? Hey, there's Ray Epps. Are we gonna talk about Ray Epps during this at all? Are we just gonna pretend like he wasn't there or?
Officer Edwards, can you describe, uh, the crowd that had assembled at the Peace Circle as, as you and your fellow officers, stood behind and guarded the bike racks at the Peace Circle?
Yes, so, um, there were about, I wanna say about five of us on that line. Um, and there were, so there was our bike rack, and then at the bottom of the Pennsylvania Avenue walkway, right by Peace Circle, there was another bike rack. And so the crowd had kind of gathered.
I'm, I'm serious. What is this, uh, what is the point of this? What is this proving or what is, what are we?
And they were mostly civilian clothes. There were some, um, who had military.
We've all seen this footage already.
We could see people with, uh, bulletproof vests on, you know, things like that. Um, they didn't seem, you know, extremely cohesive, but they had gathered there in their outfits.
I am still just baffled, man.
Together, and, um, Joseph Biggs started, he had a micro, or a megaphone, and he started talking about, you know, first it was things kind of relating to Congress. And then the tables started turning once.
Oh man, did you hear how the music synced up right there? She said the tables turn and boom.
Crowd with orange hats, they came up chanting.
I'm much better at emotional manipulation than they are, I think.
Antifa. Um, and they joined that group. And once they joined that group, Joseph Biggs rhetoric turned to.
Yes, this one's lining up perfectly. I love it. The track.
He started asking us questions like, you've, you didn't miss a paycheck during the pandemic. Um, mentioning stuff about our pay scale was mentioned.
Dude, what does this have to do with shit? I don't understand. What, what are we here for?
And I've worked, I can, you know, conservatively say probably hundreds of civil disturbance events. I know when I'm being turned into a villain.
Footage again so we can really get into the, the drama of it all.
Understatement of the century. I said, uh, Sarge, I think we're gonna need a few more people down here. And.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with Trump as far as like, Trump wanted there to be people there, and the mayor was the one who freaking pulled people out like a almost like they knew what was going on.
I saw.
Or they knew what they wanted to have happen, at least.
The person now identified as Ryan Samson, he put his arm around Joseph Biggs, and they were talking. And then they started approaching the first barricade. They ripped the first barricade down, and they approached our, uh, bike racks. You know, at that time, we started, um, holding on, grabbing the bike racks. You know, there weren't many of us, so I grabbed.
Footage and we've already talked about this like three times. Why are we still talking about this? I don't understand.
I, I wasn't under any pretense that I could hold it for very long, but I just wanted to, you know, make sure that we could get more people down.
All the other officers except for this petite blonde woman. I mean, I just, I'd like answers to these basic questions personally.
Um, I felt the bike rack come on top of my head, and I was pushed backwards, and my foot caught the stair behind me, and I, uh, my chin hit the handrail, and then I, at that point, I had blacked out, but my, um, the back of my head clipped the concrete stairs behind me.
Are we charging people with this? I mean, if that's what we're doing, then okay, but I don't, I don't really know what we're doing.
But then when you regained consciousness, even with the injuries, you returned to duty. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. Um, you know, at that time, adrenaline kicked in. I ran towards the west front, and I tried to hold the line at the Senate steps, um, at the lower west terrace. More people kept coming at us. Um, it just seemed like, you know, more and more people started, um, you know, coming on to the west front.
Yeah, it's almost like they anticipated tens of thousands of people to be there.
MPD's officers showed up, um, their bike officers.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, why would you have this small blonde woman be like, hey, we're gonna pull all of our other police, our Capitol Police, but this woman and like eight other people, we'll let them hold the line when tens of thousands of people are gonna show up. You don't even have to know that there's gonna be violence. You just know that if there's gonna be that many people, you should have security. I mean, it's not rocket science. That's why this is also suspicious from the, from the get. They pulled all these people. They had less people on duty at the Capitol during that, when it was starting, than they do on an average day when there's not a rally. I mean, like. If that's not suspicious, it deserves, uh, I don't know, an investigation?
I got, it was on the house side of the lower west terrace. And, um, I was holding that line for a while. There weren't many of us over there, um, and Officer Sicknick.
Yeah, should I be playing sadder music for this? Is this, is this too intense? Should it be very sad music?
Forty to forty-five minutes that I was down there. Um, we were just, as the best we could, we were just, you know, grappling over.
How about this one?
Bike racks and trying to hold them as quick as possible.
There it is.
All of the sudden, I see movement to the left of me. And I turned, and it was Officer Sicknick with his head in his hands. And he was ghostly pale. Um, which I, I figured at that point that he had been sprayed, and I was, um, concerned. My, uh, you know, cop, cop alarm bells went off. Um, because if you get sprayed with pepper spray, you're gonna turn red. He turned, um, just about as pale as the sheet of paper.
Oh, man. As pale as that sheet of paper.
See what had hit him, what had happened, and that's when I got sprayed in the eyes as well. I was taken to be decontaminated by another officer, um, but we didn't get the chance because we were then tear gassed.
Uh, and we, um, are gonna play just a, a brief clip of, of that moment that you've just described, Officer Edwards.
This is all they're gonna do, isn't it? We gotta crank the tunes.
Officer Edwards, I just wanna thank you for being here, um, and, and I know, again, how difficult it is. I know, um, the family of Officer Sicknick as well, who's here tonight. Um, and, um, one of the things.
No, I gotta go back to the sad piano music.
Capitol Police officers said to me, uh, recently was, uh, to ask me whether or not, as members of Congress, all of us understood that on that day on January 6th, when we were evacuated from the chamber, uh, were led to a safe undisclosed location, whether we knew that, that so many of you had rushed out of the building and into the. uh, were led to a safe undisclosed location, whether we knew that, that so many of you had rushed out of the building and into the fight. And I can assure you that we do know that.
This is just, we're just going around in circles. Just continually going around in circles.
Thank you for your, uh, continued work with our committee and the interviews.
Are we just gonna keep saying the same shit over and over? Man. I wanted to see how much of this I could get through, and honestly, pulling up all the B-roll and funny music has made me stay with it longer than I expected. Man, that beginning, when I first put the music on with the clips of Hitler and all that, when they're talking about Trump. Oh, I probably would have stopped this a long time ago if that, if that hadn't worked out so well.
I can, um, that time when I talked about falling behind MPD's line. I remember because I had been kind of shielded away, um, because I was holding those stairs. So I wasn't able to really see what was going on over here. When I fell behind that line, and I saw, I can just remember my, my breath catching in my throat.
Oh, man, it's getting, it's getting intense now.
I, what I saw was just a war scene. It, it was something like I'd seen out of the movies. I, I couldn't believe my eyes.
I'm slowly switching between songs as I feel it.
Officers on the ground, um, you know, they were bleeding, they were throwing up, they were, you know, they had... I mean, I saw friends with blood all over their faces. I was slipping in people's blood. You know, I, I was catching people as they fell.
You mean to tell me, being a police officer can be dangerous?
Carnage, it was chaos.
You should never have to go through something like that.
I, I can't e, I can't even describe what I saw. I've never in my wildest dreams...
And I love how everything she's describing was not supported by any of the footage that we saw.
I would find myself in the middle of a battle. You know, I'm, I'm trained to detain, you know, a couple of subjects and handle, you know, handle a crowd, but I'm, I'm not in combat, right? And that day, it was just hours of in-hand combat.
Well, it sounds like the government done fucked up then, doesn't it, lady? If what you're saying is true.
With things that were way beyond any, any a law enforcement officer has ever trained for.
That is not true at all, but okay.
I just remember that moment of stepping behind the line and just seeing the absolute war zone that the west front had become.
Again, the footage didn't show that, but what is the point of this? Are they ever gonna explain what the point of this is?
That you have told the world about tonight. Uh, it's unfortunate that you had to defend the Capitol.
Yeah, not like it was your fucking job. It's unfortunate you had to defend the Capitol? I mean, I know that you signed up and trained and, and went through all this, to be at the Capitol in the first place, but, man, it's such a bummer that you had to, you had to do your job. Yeah, and, and is anyone gonna tell her that this was all set up? That they were baited into this? That, that it was all, that it was the feds who set this up? They showed Ray Epps, he was in several of the videos, he was one of many people there who was a fed. I mean, come on. It almost seems like none of that's gonna get brought up. Which is just, it's just shocking. I mean, who, who could have guessed?
The images you recorded and have shared with the committee do a better job than any of our words in reinforcing the violence of January 6th. We hope that the power of your footage helped encourage all Americans to consider how citizens...
They really don't get that the footage did the opposite. What they said sounded way worse than what the footage even showed, but okay, sure.
Officer Edwards, thank you for your brave service, as I indicated, on January 6th, and all you did to protect us, and most importantly, our democracy. If you and your fellow officers had held the line against those violent insurrectionists, we can only imagine the disaster that would have ensued.
Uh, yeah, crank those tunes.
Is the face of danger is admirable. And your will to continue to protect and serve despite your serious injuries should be an inspiration to all of us. We wish you a continued recovery, and look forward to seeing you back in uniform sometime soon. The members of the select committee may have additional questions for tonight's witnesses, and we ask that you respond expeditiously in writing to those questions. Without objections, members, we permit it, 10 business days to submit statements for the record, including opening remarks and additional questions for the witnesses. The witnesses have just told us what they heard the rioters saying, why they stormed the Capitol on that day. Now we're going to hear it from the rioters themselves.
Oh, God.
Without objection, I include in the record a video presentation.
Thank God. Another video presentat, yeah.
What really made me want to come was the fact that, you know, I had supported Trump all that time. Uh, I did believe, you know, that the election was being stolen, um, and Trump asked us to come.
He personally asked for us to come to DC that day, and I thought...
That's what a rally is, no shit.
If this is the only thing he's gonna ask of me, I'll do it.
We're gonna walk down to the Capitol.
Did you recall President Trump mentioning going to the Capitol during the speech?
Dude, Trump was the only president who's ever called for a rally of his supporters, ever.
I know why I was there, and that's because he called me there, and he laid out what is happening in our government. He laid it out.
But I remember Donald Trump telling people to be there, right, I mean, to support.
So you mentioned that the President asked you, uh, do you remember specific messages?
Oh, my God, again. Is there gonna be evidence, or is this just gonna be people saying shit?
For us to come to DC, that big things are gonna happen.
What got me interested, he said, "I have something very, uh, important to say on January 6th," or something like that. Is what got, what, what, what got me interested to be there.
You know, Trump has only asked me for two things. He asked me for my vote, and he asked me to come on January 6th.
So...
When the committee reconvenes next week, we're going to examine the lies that convinced those men and others to storm the Capitol. To try to stop the transfer of power. We're going to take a close look at the first part of Trump's attack on the rule of law.
Trump's attack. I thought that, like, the whole January 6th committee was supposed to be this thing where we were gonna, we're gonna get to the truth. Well, we're gonna get to the truth of Trump's attack. Well, it sounds like you've already decided what the truth is, so why don't you just go fuck yourself? How about that? Let's just, let's just go with that, because that, I have just as much of a right to say that as your nonsense. I mean, what is this? This is so stupid. I have made a better argument in telling you to go fornicate yourself than you have in any of this that we just watched. I mean, that was nothing. They showed us nothing. There was no proof of anything. It was just saying, "Hey, some people were mean to me, and, you know, I feel like my feelings were hurt." And, you know, Trump said that there should be a rally. Did you know that? Did you know that Trump called his supporters for a rally? That's unprecedented. Could you imagine any other politician ever asking his supporters to come to the Capitol for a rally? If that's not insurrection, I don't know what is. I mean, what could be more, uh, a threat to democracy than politicians holy, holding rallies? I mean, that's just crazy talk. I mean, I, I, I could never imagine that ever happening. I mean, come on, what is this BS? As I said, if we're gonna go down this road, which we should, hey, not, not the way that they're doing it, but investigate crimes. If someone committed a crime, investigate it. Find it out. Let's see what happened. All I'm asking for is that we do it both ways. I want to find out who was going out and putting pallets, taking pallets of bricks out of box trucks outside places where Black Lives Matter was, and Antifa were rioting. I want to know who did that. Someone funded that, as if we don't know who, but somebody did that. And they used those bricks to break windows in courthouses, private businesses, and homes. Can we investigate that, maybe? That'd be great. If you committed a crime on January 6th, you deserve to be investigated, deserve to get your, your time in court. Let's do the same thing for the two years of the insanity after, after George Floyd. All the Black Lives Matter nonsense? I mean, come on. They said justice goes both ways. The law, the rule of law should go both ways, but, you know, whatever. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll just get Matthew McConaughey and, uh... What was, what was the, uh... BTS and whoever other jackasses they've gotten to come and speak at the, uh, press conferences recently. Sure. We don't need rule of law. Let's just have that. That's, that's fantastic. All right, you guys. That was January 6th, uh, the first day. I mean, I highly, highly doubt, I'll be interested enough to do, uh... The next day of this. I just figured that this day was gonna be exactly like what it was, which was just a bunch of emotional drivel that was absolutely stupid. Which, like I said, that's exactly what it was. I'm sure after this, it'll just be even more painful to watch, and I'd have to try really hard getting theatrical music and stock footage to make it even remotely interesting. So I don't know if I'll do it again, but... Anyway, thanks for being here. What time is it? Nine o'clock? Yeah... Maybe we could, uh... Maybe we could do an over-the-legal-limit stream, or do some games or something? I don't know. I'll think about it. Anyway... Thank you, guys, for being here, and once again, don't forget... Alex Jones was right.